Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our meeting of December, the last one of this year, as a matter of fact, I believe. 6:37 is the time that we're starting. Do we have Mr. Hollenbeck on the line?
Yes, sir.
Oh, great. John Hollenbeck is going to do the invocation, so if you'd all please rise.
Thank you. Okay. Heavenly Father, we come to you this evening grateful for your abundant blessings in our community. We're especially thankful for our liberty and our freedom. We are thankful for our ability to self-govern. We're grateful for our political leaders. We ask your continued blessings and protection, especially during this pandemic. Grant wisdom to our elected officials as they meet tonight to listen, discuss, and decide on many important issues affecting our city. Watch over us and bless us in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Well, I have a good friend here and our state senator who I think would be very happy to lead us in a flag salute. Would you do that, please, Melissa? Thank you.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Bonner.
Here.
Mayor Portem Castillo.
Here.
Councilmember Green.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Mayor Aaron Cranz.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Mr. Attorney, do we have anything to report out of closed session?
Mayor, we have no items to report out of closed session today.
Okay, thank you. Mr. City Manager, should we have any changes to the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. We'd like to pull item number nine from the agenda, and we'll take this item up at a future meeting.
Number nine?
Yes, item number nine.
May I have the approval of the agenda minus item number nine?
Approval of the agenda as written, except item nine.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Okay, thank you very much. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Would you like to tell us something about item number nine?
About number nine?
Did you say you were pulling number nine?
We'd like to take it off the agenda.
Oh, you want to take it off?
Yes.
Perfectly, okay, thank you. Well, I believe we're going to have a State of the City presentation now.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Well, as we all know, this is the city's 30th year of cityhood. We had originally planned a big celebration on December 1st, which was the actual day of incorporation in 1990, along with a State of the City address. But because of COVID and not being able to have in-person gatherings, we were unable to hold that event. But city staff did work on a brief video honoring the 30th anniversary and covering the events of the last year and the accomplishments for the city, and we'd like to play that at this time.
Happy anniversary, Canyon Lake. It's been an honor to be your mayor during our 30th year. Having lived in our community since 1990, I've served to see our community grow and change throughout the years. Well, this year was a challenge for all of us. I'm happy to report that the state of our city is strong and resilient. Despite the challenges brought by this pandemic, the city council, with the help of the city staff, has been able to balance our budget, provide assistance for local businesses, and implement new programs and services that will enhance our quality of life and set our city on a more stable financial path with the decision to establish a new Canyon Lake Fire Department. We are blessed to be able to live in this little bit of paradise, and I'm confident that the next 30 years will be even brighter for our great city. And now, I'd like to take this opportunity, if I may please, to introduce my fellow colleagues on the city council, as well as the wonderful staff here at our city hall, and they're going to take some time to tell you about the wonderful things that we've accomplished this year and things that we're going to be doing in the future.
Hi, everyone. Mayor Portem Casey Castillo here. I wanted to share with you the things that I am proud of that we've been able to accomplish this year despite the challenges of COVID-19. We were able to work with the community to create and distribute over 3,000 masks for those who needed them. This huge effort would have not been possible without the coordination between the city and the community, and I'm so thankful to all those who participated. As the chair of the Veterans Day Committee, we worked hard to make sure we were able to honor our veterans, although it was a different type of celebration. This year's Veterans Day Golf Cart Parade was a huge success, and I want to say thank you to everyone who came out to participate. Finally, I want to say thank you and recognize the new deputies who have been patrolling Canyon Lake. In July, Canyon Lake was transferred to the Lake Elsinore Station for regular patrolling. Our new deputies have been great, and they've been working hard to keep our community safe. If you see a deputy out there, make sure you thank them.
Happy birthday, Canyon Lakers. My name is Jeremy Smith, and I'm your city councilman here in Canyon Lake. Welcome to the virtual State of the City. You know, we're doing things a little bit differently because of COVID-19, but that doesn't mean that we're still not moving forward. We've done some amazing things this last year. One of them is working with business owners to stay open, to come up with ways and solutions they can still operate here in the city of Canyon Lake. We've also done a great job at allowing to expand an internship program here, bring on young people to see how local government works, and allow them to understand the inner workings of what we do here at City Hall. I'm also very proud that this council has taken it very seriously to digitalize our files so that you now, as a resident, can look up things online, which is so important to do, not just...
Perfect. Jeremy.
Thank you.
I missed the spot.
So much for digitalizing it.
Escape long trip for the city of Canyon Lake.
Safe rental.
...online, which is so important to do, not just because of COVID, but moving forward so we can be not only more transparent, but we can just make things easier here at City Hall. It's an exciting time to be a Canyon Laker. I'm truly blessed to be able to serve you on our council, and I'm looking forward to seeing what 2021 brings to this community.
Happy birthday, Canyon Lake. It's our 30th. I'm here to talk today about our strides that we've made in our public safety programs that we have instituted here in the city of Canyon Lake. Last year, we have instituted a fire prevention program. We've trained all of our code enforcement. All of our businesses have been inspected to make sure they're in compliance with all the fire codes and codes, building codes that are in place. Second program that I'd like...
What program is that?
Hi, Canyon Lake. My name is Mike Borha, and I'm the administrative services manager for the city of Canyon Lake.
Technical difficulties are so 2020, huh?
Canyon Lake, it's our 30th. I'm here to talk today about our strides that we've made in our public safety programs that we have instituted here in the city of Canyon Lake. Last year, we have instituted a fire prevention program. We've trained all of our code enforcement. All of our businesses have been inspected to make sure they're in compliance with all the fire codes and codes, building codes that are in place. Second program that I'd like to talk about is our home safety inspection for rentals that ensures that smoke detectors, carbon monoxide, and other possible hazards are not in those homes, and we have got safe rentals. The last is our fire department. We are going to start our own fire department within a year and a half, and we have to do that, one, because we want to maintain the current service levels both on fire and EMS. Number two, we have to have financially sustainable future. Currently, with what we have, we cannot be sustainable within the next five years. We look forward to establishment of our own fire department, and we look forward to working with the citizens of Canyon Lake. With that, happy anniversary, and celebrate this year with a big smile. This 2020 has been an interesting year for all. Thank you.
Hi, Canyon Lake. My name is Mike Borha, and I'm the administrative services manager for the city of Canyon Lake. Over the past year, the city has worked to improve landscaping and fencing along Railroad Canyon Road, as well as work with our partners to maintain clean water for the region. The city has installed trash capture devices along Railroad Canyon Road in order to meet state and national clean water mandates, and we also work to repair and rehabilitate the iron fencing along Railroad Canyon Road, improving seating infrastructure and bringing it up to par with the quality our residents should expect. Lastly, we signed a landscape agreement that has saved the city over $6,000 each year while still maintaining our beautiful, drought-tolerant landscape along Railroad Canyon Road. Thank you and stay safe, Canyon Lake.
Hi, Canyon Lake. My name's Tyler Ferrari, and I'm the new management analyst for the city. This year, we've expanded and improved upon our communications efforts. We've updated the city's website and given it a fresh and new look. Additionally, we have expanded our social media presence to reach the residents on a variety of new platforms. Our new Instagram account has already crossed 1,000 followers, and we are excited to continue to grow the account and connect with more of our residents. Lastly, in the coming months, we'll be starting a new outreach program aimed at connecting with every resident here in Canyon Lake. Soon, you'll see city staff and our new interns walking around your neighborhood to hear your concerns and also share the various ways you can stay connected with us here at City Hall. Thank you.
My name is Bill Blankenship, and I'm the economic development consultant for Canyon Lake. Over the past year, we have moved to create new development opportunities for the city. To meet this goal, we met with federal, state, and local leaders to discuss the acquisition of 800 acres of Bureau of Land Management land on the north and west portions of the city. Additionally, we have identified a partner who will assist with a strategy to develop commercial and residential opportunities along Railroad Canyon Road. As of spring of 2020, the city owns a new building in the town center which establishes ownership of property in the center for future municipal needs. The city continues to place a large priority in establishing increased amenities for its citizens, a stronger business climate for valued business owners, and future opportunities for new businesses that will come to the city. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Gina Dixon with the city of Canyon Lake Enforcement Department. Our department's primary focus is on ensuring that all residents enjoy the quality of life and all of the things that we have to offer. As you can see, we have camping and illegal fire pits that are out here. We have some illegal dumping and a lot of ATV and UTV use. This area is for hiking and biking, and because of that, we have increased enforcement activity out here. Alongside with working on enforcement activities out here and reducing the number of illegal vehicle use, we have implemented a stronger business license enforcement program to ensure that business licensing is enforced equitably for all of our businesses out here.
Hey, Canyon Lake, I wanted to share with you all the great things that the city clerk's office has been able to achieve this year. Firstly, we have worked to digitize city files and move the files to storage on the cloud. This will allow for easy access to city files for both city staff and to the public. Despite the pandemic, we were able to hold a successful election with almost 90% of eligible voters turning out. We were able to coordinate with the county and with the POA to ensure that there was safe in-person voting for residents by hosting our voter assistance center at the Canyon Lake Country Club. We thank everyone for voting this year, and we're looking forward to swearing in our newly-elected council members at the December 7th city council meeting.
Despite the challenges faced this year by local governments everywhere, in Canyon Lake, it has been a year of tremendous positive change and economic revitalization. City Hall operations have been overhauled, modernizing and professionalizing the delivery of services to residents. Examples are the city's new website, digitization of files, moving servers to the cloud, and greatly expanding communications efforts. In addition, the city's relationship with the POA and with surrounding jurisdictions are much improved from what they once were. It's been a busy year for the city, as a number of key programs have been launched this year that will enhance quality of life while at the same time ensuring financial stability. A prime example is the city's new EMS subscription program. This voluntary program will ensure our ability to continue providing critical emergency response services without raising taxes. New initiatives such as the Fire Life Safety Inspection Program, the Residential Rental Registration Program, and prohibition of short-term vacation rentals will improve public health and safety, help maintain our housing stock, preserve property values, and enhance overall quality of life. Speaking of quality of life, perhaps no feature of the community impacts Canyon Lake's unique lifestyle more than the lake itself. This year, the city has made significant strides in protecting our water quality, having implemented a number of regional water quality control board requirements, such as the establishment of a trash implementation plan and the installation of trash capture devices within city storm drains, which prevents trash from making its way from our streets into the lake. Perhaps most importantly, after more than a decade of struggling with crippling budget deficits, the city's budget is now balanced. This was achieved through a combination of revenue produced by the new programs I mentioned, a renegotiated trash-falling agreement with the CRNR, and various cost-cutting measures. The current balanced budget, along with the city council's decision last month to move forward with the formation of a municipal fire department owned and operated by the city of Canyon Lake, should place city finances on solid ground for the foreseeable future.
Thank you all for taking the time to join us today to learn about the many great things the city has worked on in the past year. We are all honored to be able to serve you going into this next year, and we look forward to continuing to build on these accomplishments and make Canyon Lake the premier community Well, that was a little bit of a substitute for what we were going to do. We had a gala event prepared, but we had to cancel it like so many other things. But next year, I'm sure is going to be even a little better than this one, so thanks to all the council members and all the staff for participating. And at this time, I think I'm going to turn the meeting over to the city clerk. She has a few things to take care of.
Thank you, Mayor. It is truly my honor as the elections official for the city of Canyon Lake to present to you Resolution Number 2020-49, declaring the results of the general municipal election held on November 3rd, 2020. The general municipal ballot included three seats for members of the city council. We had a total of five candidates: Jordan Aaron Cranz, Larry Green, Dale Welty, Paul Kakas, and James Jim Randle. We had 89.92% of registered voters cast their ballots, which is higher than the county at 81.80%. The results for the statewide election will be certified on December 11th, but as of December 3rd, they were at 80.7%. We had a total of 7,958 registered voters in Canyon Lake, and 7,156 ballots were cast. Councilman-elect Welty received the highest number of votes with 3,321 votes. Mayor Aaron Cranz came in a close second with 3,304 votes, and Councilman Green rounded out the top three with 3,023 votes. It is my recommendation that the city council adopt Resolution Number 2020-49, a resolution of the city council of the city of Canyon Lake, California, reciting the facts of the general municipal election held on November 3rd, 2020, declaring the results and such matters as provided by law.
Thank you. I believe we have to have a motion and a second.
I move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Mayor, if we can please get a roll call vote on this one?
May we have a roll call vote, please?
Thank you. Councilmember Bonner.
Aye.
Mayor Portem Castillo.
Aye.
Councilmember Green.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Aye.
Mayor Aaron Cranz.
Aye.
Motion carried to approve Resolution Number 2020-49.
Thank you.
Thank you. We will now move on to the presentation to outgoing councilmember Randy Bonner. If I can ask Councilman Bonner to please join me up here, please? Thank you, councilman. After having served on the city council since 2010 with the break from 2014 through 2016, Councilman Randy Bonner chose not to run for reelection. We are very thankful for his time on the city council and for all his contributions to the city of Canyon Lake. Tonight, we have several agencies joining us to recognize Councilmember Bonner. To kick off the presentations, I'm very honored to introduce State Senator Melissa Melendez.
Thank you. Thank you so much. All right. Randy, my old buddy, golly, it's been forever since I've seen you. So I have a resolution here for you on behalf of the 28th Senate District and myself and my family. You know, we've known each other for a long time. You've served with my husband on the board to select the next class of...
Service candidates.
Service candidates, yeah. I always, I don't know why, tripped up on that. You'd think I'd know that by now. You've served with my husband on that board for Congressman Calvert. You've served with me in a number of different areas, and I just, I'm sorry to see you go, but I'm so proud of the work that you have done. You have done a lot. You know, I won't go through the whole list because we'd be here all night, but you have been, well, you've served in the Marine Corps Reserves for a number of years, which we're very, very grateful for that. In fact, I remember the first, it was Memorial Day ceremony that you started. Yeah, I remember that. You have been on the city council, you've been on the POA, you have been everywhere, and we very much are grateful to you, forgiving of your time and of your efforts and your wisdom and your experience. It's hard to find all of those things in one person, and we're grateful that you decided to share it with your community for so many years. So on behalf of the 28th Senate District, I have a giant resolution for your "I Love Me" wall in your home, which I hope you have somewhere. Everyone should have one. And I am going to, I think we're going to do a picture, yes? Yes. Okay, so if you don't mind, is he going to stay on the X? Yes. Yes, okay. I'm coming to you, Randy, okay? I'm coming to you, buddy. There you go.
All righty, ready. One, two, three, and then we'll do one this way. One, two, three.
Thank you, Senator. Next, we have a few presentations via Zoom. Joining us virtually, we have, from the city of Wildamar, Mayor Dustin Nigg.
Hello. Can I point your name? Yes. Okay. Randy, I did not realize you were recording. Rob. Hey, so we met, this is really good group. We met, I'm recently elected down in Long Beach. And Randy, I have to say that you were welcome, I think, to meet. You took down your wing, you were super nice, and yeah, I couldn't say enough about that. Thank you. I read about your recent article, and I didn't realize you've been on this since 2010. So I will say on behalf of myself and my colleagues, you know, thank you for your service, just in general. I think we all, at least in this room and here virtually, know the hours and the time put into serving the community, so yeah, thank you very much. I have a certificate also from the city of Wildamar, not nearly as gigantic as... But I do also request you put this on the "I Love Me" wall. On behalf of myself, my council colleagues, and the city of Wildamar, I want to give you heartfelt congratulations. I thank you for your dedication, leadership, and service to not only the city of Canyon Lake, helping to grow there, but also the city of Wildamar as a whole. So fair and wise.
The bottom of the seas. Congratulations again, man.
Thank you.
Next, we have joining us from Elsinore Valley Municipal Water District, Director Darcy Burke.
Thank you. Councilmember Bonner or Randy, I've become your friend, and I really appreciate that. On behalf of all of the directors of the Elsinore Valley Municipal Water District, I want to thank you for your service and your leadership. We appreciate your insight and your contributions and your time, and we always notice that you put yourself above others, and our community as a whole has benefited directly from that. So thank you. And for one of your pet projects, which I really enjoy, is our monthly roundtable meetings. And I know it's not always an easy conversation. That happens. Sometimes it's very difficult, but you made it a safe place so we can resolve issues. And your leadership really came through when some of those topics were not popular and we were not all getting along. So thank you for your leadership and your time and your service. I hope you enjoy the best of health and have a wonderful retirement and finally get to use all those amenities that we all drive by when we're going from one meeting to the next, and you finally get to use them. Congratulations. Anna has a certificate from us, again, not as big as the senators', and hopefully you can find a place that you'll look fondly on it and think of all the hard work you did and how much you have earned this great retirement. So thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Next, we have Riverside Transit Agency Chair of the Board, Councilwoman, Wildamar Councilwoman, Bridget Moore.
Thank you. Mr. Bonner, I wanted to take a moment to thank you for all your contributions to the Riverside Transit Agency. During your time on the board, we did a lot of great things, and you were part of so many accomplishments. As a proud representative of the city of Canyon Lake, we are not only a strong advocate for your home city, but also for Canyon Riverside as a whole. Make no mistake, you're a true champion of public transit, and your contributions will have a positive effect on the agency for years to come. Again, thank you for your hard work on the RTA Board of Directors. We're sad to see you go, and we wish you the best of luck in your future endeavors. As a token of our support, please accept a certificate of appreciation on behalf of RTA.
Thank you.
See, they're getting bigger and bigger.
Next, we have a presentation from Lieutenant James Rail from the Riverside County Sheriff's Department.
Good evening, Councilmember Bonner. It's been a pleasure. I've only been here seven months, but you made me feel welcome right at the beginning. I'm at the roundtables and sitting there and finding out the issues of Canyon Lake and being able to just communicate with everyone was an awesome. That was a great idea that you had. I've never seen that in any other city, and it's an awesome thing that we're going to keep going with. But I have a sheriff's commendation signed by Sheriff Chad Bianco. He could not make it, so I will just read it. Riverside County Sheriff's Department recognizes and appreciates your 10 years of dedicated service to the city of Canyon Lake. Your unwavering dedication and support to public safety has been instrumental in making the city of Canyon Lake a desirable location to live. Your tenure on the council truly made a difference, and Canyon Lake continues to be one of the safest cities in the county. Riverside County Sheriff's Department wishes you the best in your future endeavors. Signed on December 7th by Sheriff Chad Bianco.
Thank you, Lieutenant. Next, we have joining us virtually Canyon Lake Property Owners Association Board President, Chris Poland.
Chris, your audio is off.
How's that? Oh, I got to start over. Thank you very much. Well, I'll say it again. Thank you. Good to see you, Councilman Bonner, Randy. We first met on the dock course a couple of years ago when we were assigned to the same foursome. I'm new to Canyon Lake only for the last four years, but I have been a beneficiary of the peace and calm that you've brought to the relationship between the city and the POA. I understand that you were with us in POA leadership during the very troubled times...
and service to not only the city of Canyon Lake, helping to grow there, but also the city of Wildemar and our vision of the whole. So, fair and wright.
The bottom of the seas. Congratulations again, man.
Thank you.
Next, we have, joining us from Elsinore Valley Municipal Water District, Director Darcy Burke.
Thank you. Councilman Bonner or Randy, I've become your friend, and I really appreciate that. On behalf of all of the directors of the Elsinore Valley Municipal Water District, I want to thank you for your service and your leadership. We appreciate your insight and your contributions and your time. And we always notice that you put yourself above others. And our community as a whole has benefited directly from that. So, thank you. And for one of your pet projects, which I really enjoy, is our monthly roundtable meetings. And I know it's not always an easy conversation. That happens. Sometimes it's very difficult. But you made it a safe place so we can resolve issues. And your leadership really came through when some of those topics were not popular and we were not all getting along. So, thank you for your leadership and your time and your service. I hope you enjoy the best of health and have a wonderful retirement and finally get to use all those amenities that we all drive by when we're going from one meeting to the next, and you finally get to use them. Congratulations. Anna has a certificate from us, again, not as big as the senator's. And hopefully you can find a place that you'll look fondly on it and think of all the hard work you did and how much you have earned this great retirement. So, thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Next, we have Riverside Transit Agency Chair of the Board, Councilwoman, Wildemar Councilwoman, Bridget Moore.
Thank you. Mr. Bonner, I wanted to take a moment to thank you for all your contributions to the Riverside Transit Agency. During your time on the board, we did a lot of great things, and you were part of so many accomplishments. As a proud representative of the city of Canyon Lake, we are not only a strong advocate for your home city, but also for County Riverside as a whole. Make no mistake, you're a true champion of public transit, and your contributions will have a positive effect on the agency for years to come. Again, thank you for your hard work on the R T A Board of Directors. We're sad to see you go, and we wish you the best of luck in your future endeavors. As a token of our support, please accept the certificate of appreciation on behalf of R T A.
Thank you.
See, they're getting bigger and bigger.
Next, we have a presentation from Lieutenant James Rail from the Riverside County Sheriff's Department.
Good evening, Councilman Bonner. It's been a pleasure. I've only been here seven months, but you made me feel welcome right at the beginning. I'm at the roundtables and sitting there and finding out the issues of Canyon Lake and being able to just communicate with everyone was an awesome. That was a great idea that you had. I've never seen that in any other city. And it's an awesome thing that we're gonna keep going with. But I have a sheriff's commendation signed by Sheriff Chad Bianco. He could not make it, so I will just read it. Riverside County Sheriff's Department recognizes and appreciates your 10 years of dedicated service to the city of Canyon Lake. Your unwavering dedication and support to public safety has been instrumental in making the city of Canyon Lake a desirable location to live. Your tenure on the council truly made a difference, and Canyon Lake continues to be one of the safest cities in the county. Riverside County Sheriff's Department wishes you the best in your future endeavors. Signed on December 7th by Sheriff Chad Bianco.
Thank you, Lieutenant. Next, we have, joining us virtually, Canyon Lake Property Owners Association Board President Chris Poland.
Chris, your audio is off.
How's that? Oh, I gotta start over. Thank you very much. Well, I'll say it again. Thank you. It's good to see you, Councilman Bonner, Randy. We first met on the dock course a couple of years ago when we were assigned to the same foursome. I'm new to Canyon Lake only for the last four years, but I have been a beneficiary of the peace and calm that you've brought to the relationship between the city and the P O A. I understand that you were with us in P O A leadership during the very troubled times and did your part to help bring that to resolution. Appreciate that very much. We appreciate the work that you've done on the council. Darcy mentioned the roundtable that we have once a month. We also have an economic roundtable that you've started, and it's continuing the conversation between the city and the P O A in terms of economic development. Very exciting for all of us. Really appreciate all that you've done. Congratulations on your retirement. Best wishes from all your friends at the Canyon Lake Property Owners Association. And we have a certificate also that you'll cherish and put at the top of the list, I'm sure.
Next, we have Canyon Lake Chamber of Commerce President Jeannie Odell.
Thank you very much. Hi, Randy. I've known Randy for over 10 years now. A little-known fact is Randy actually took the seat vacated by my husband from City Council. So, I've always appreciated that at least somebody of Randy's caliber was able to take over and carry on the dream. So, thank you for that. But on behalf of the Canyon Lake Chamber of Commerce, we have a certificate for you. And I'm going to read it. It just says, "A certificate of appreciation is presented to Randall Bonner. In appreciation for his many years of public service, for his unwavering support of the Canyon Lake Chamber of Commerce, and his unconditional support for the local businesses." So, thank you very much. I would like to add that thanks for inviting the chamber to take a seat at the table, the roundtable and the economic development table that everybody's been mentioning, and for including the chamber in discussions regarding the current state of the city as well as the future plans. So, thank you very, very much, Randy. And I certainly miss seeing you at Pepe's once I sold it. So, I appreciate your support there as well. So, thank you again.
There are a number of other agencies who wanted to recognize Councilmember Bonner, but were not available to attend. In the interest of time, I will not read all the certificates, but I do want to read a portion from Congressman Ken Calvert's tribute to Randy. It says, "I want to personally acknowledge and thank Randy for serving on my Academy Nomination Selection Committee and helping to determine which students from the 42nd Congressional District receive nominations to our military service academies. I know I speak on behalf of all residents in expressing my heartfelt thanks and praise for Randy's significant contributions to the city of Canyon Lake. I wish Randy and his family the very best in the years to come." I would also like to thank the city of Lake Elsinore, the city of Menifee, the city of Marietta, the city of Paris, the city of Temecula, and Riverside County Transportation Commission for all providing certificates for Councilman Bonner. The Riverside County Transportation Commission also sends a small token of their appreciation. Lastly, I would like to ask our city manager to join me at the podium as we present on behalf of the city.
Randy, I'm not even really sure where to begin here. I'm gonna keep it short, or else I might get choked up, which is probably not becoming of a city manager at a council meeting. I think it's clear how loved you are in this community. And you have been involved in the fabric of this community for so long and have been such an amazing leader in this community, whether it be, you know, with the clubs or with the P O A and, gosh, a decade with the city. I think you're gonna be remembered for a lot of wonderful things. And in my mind, maybe more than anything, you've really been a unifier here. Someone who has, maybe more than anyone else, been able to bring everyone together, bring the P O A and the city together and make this city look good on regional boards and committees. You know, we've talked about the roundtables, which brings the city and the agencies that we work with and we have to have good relationships with. And that was you, Randy. And everybody in the city knows about you, but I hope they realize, and the biggest thing for me, Randy, is that you have the biggest heart of maybe any public servant I've ever known. Randy is someone who deeply and genuinely cares about everyone he works with in this community. And from your staff, we're really sad to see you go. And we're gonna miss working with you. And, you know, in terms of our friendships, this isn't the end. We're still all here, but we're gonna miss you on the City Council. And so, the city has a couple of things we'd like to present to you. This is a plaque, and it reads, "In honor of your years of faithful service as a valued member of the Canyon Lake City Council, during your tenure, you have exemplified outstanding leadership, vision, and courage. The residents of Canyon Lake will be forever grateful." And it has the years you were on the City Council and the years that you were mayor. I can give this to you, Randy. And one more fun thing. We'd like to make this a new tradition in Canyon Lake, but here's something fun that we hope you want to display in your house, maybe at the top of the list here.
I'm the only one who's been here longer than Randy, 20 years. I first met Randy when he got on council and was on the Finance Committee. And he took the time to drive to my office, and we sat down for about four hours and went over everything that I do and all the reports and how to read them. And I was really impressed that he took the time to show up and learn. And it's really an honor working with you on the Finance Committee, so.
At this time, I'll be handing the microphone to Councilman Bonner for his outgoing comments.
You know, City Manager, I got the same problem you have. Well, first of all, I'm really privileged to have two, really, everyone in the room but two in particular. State Senator Melissa Melendez, incredible person, and she's done so much for this community and this town. And it's just gonna get bigger and bigger. And then, excuse me. And I'd also like to recognize Don Ritchie. You know, she was the editor of the Friday Flyer for three, four years, and did an incredible job. And now she's got the Canyon Lake Insider. And we appreciate everything you're doing for the community, because you're making a difference in the communities. All right. First of all, I'm gonna apologize to the City Council and the staff for the last council meeting. I had hearing problems. I couldn't hear. In fact, Steve, our attorney, the attorney, responded back to me. He was right next to me, and I couldn't hear. And I just, I was so embarrassed. But there was nothing I could do at the time. But now it's got fixed, and I'm going forward, okay? It's just fall out. It wasn't working good. All right. Samuel, I'd like to think about the banner. That was, you know, when Anna called me one time and asked me to come over. I thought that was different, because usually Chris would say, "Come over." And, well, I got in the City Council, City Hall, and there was the banner. And it was incredible. And so, so much appreciated for the staff to take the effort. They didn't have to do that. And they did it. And I just can't say enough about how appreciated I do that. All right, Chris, I'm gonna talk about you for a while. You were one word to talk about. You're a leader, okay? You accepted the people that were in the city when you started, okay? Like Anna and Mike and Parity and, oh, I missed it. Oh, Jeannie, Jeannie, okay? And then you added some additional people and made, in the end, a cohesive staff, okay? And there's one thing I can say about you, Chris, in a complicated way, is the fact that the staff treats all council members the same, whether the titles I have in front of their name. And that's much appreciated. And thank you for doing that. All right, Steve, you know, you gave a good insight to a number of things that we didn't think of before. And so, you've really been an asset to the community, and thank you very much. Okay, I'm gonna make one recommendation. But before I do that, I want to give you a couple parts of it, okay? When I moved in Canyon Lake in 1996, it was roughly one-third vacation, one-third retired, and one-third working families. Now, I've been told multiple times that it's 85% of the demographics of Canyon Lake, that 85% of the citizens are working families and raising their families. And that's true. And I think if it's not exactly, it's pretty close to that. Personally, I don't think the City Council today represents the city, because we need to get more young people. So, here's my recommendation. And I'm pretty certain that it's not gonna be addressed by this next council member or probably the following, but it needs to be addressed at some point. And my recommendation is two terms, two four-year terms, and then a break. Four years or more, and then come back. Sometime later, if you wanna run for a third time, fine. But we need to get a change in the council and get the council younger and representative. Now, you know, there's not, very few people that don't know the accomplishments and contributors that Jeremy and Casey did in the last two years. Thank you, Jeremy. Thank you, Casey, for doing that. And we're a better council, because we have people like Jeremy and Casey. So, I'm hopeful we're just gonna grow on that going forward. And then lastly, I just wish the citizens could be here. But if they're watching on the computer or watching on television or what have you, I've got tremendous support over the years, and I appreciate that. And, you know, it's not easy to go away. We have a city of much, and I love the city of Canyon Lake. But it was the right time to do it, and I'm very happy I'm doing it. And I've never seen so much appreciation. So, that's it. I'm done. And I appreciate it. And I welcome the new council. Do well and yield. Thank you.
We will now be moving on to the presentation to our outgoing mayor. I'd like to ask our city manager to do the presentation, please.
This won't be quite as emotional. Well, Mr. Mayor, might be the last time I say that too for a little bit. It has been really a pleasure, this last, gosh, it's been 15 or 16 months now, as you took over the mayor's seat in, I believe it was August of 2019. And there's no way we could've known then what challenges were ahead of us. It certainly has been a road that no one in your seat has ever had to navigate before, at least not anyone alive today. And I want to thank you for the job that you've done. From staff's perspective, it's been an absolute pleasure to work with you. You know, Jordan is very involved, makes a point to check in pretty much every day and make sure the ship is running the way it's supposed to be. And it's just been, you know, it's been great to see that leadership. It's been a great partnership. And we really, really appreciate all the work you've done and working with us over the last 15, 16 months. We have a little parting gift for you, a gavel to take with you. And thank you very much.
Are you still up?
I am still up. Thank you.
You're welcome.
We will now be moving on to the certificates of election and oath of office. Swearing in Councilman-elect Dale Welty is his son Nicholas Welty. If I could ask you both to please join me at the podium.
Please raise your right hand. Repeat after me. "I, Dale Welty,
I, Dale Welty,
do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States,
I do solemnly swear that I will defend and support the Constitution of the United States,
and the Constitution of the State of California,
and the Constitution of the State of California,
against all enemies, foreign and domestic,
against all enemies, foreign and domestic,
that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States,
that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States,
and the Constitution of the State of California,
and the Constitution of the State of California,
that I will take this obligation freely,
that I will take this obligation freely,
without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion,
without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion,
and that I will well and faithfully discharge
and that I will well and faithfully discharge
the duties upon which I am about to enter."
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Thank you. I now present you the official certificate of election. Congratulations.
Thank you.
One, two, three. One, two, three.
Please, Councilman, you can now come and speak at the podium.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for, Melissa, for coming. I knew you were swearing in the other group, but my goodness, this opportunity.
I don't think you wouldn't bid. Swearing in Mayor Aaron Cranz is State Senator Melissa Melendez. If you could both join me at the podium, please. Come on down, Jordan. I mean, Mr. Mayor, excuse me. All right, you ready?
I'm ready.
Ready as you'll ever be. Okay. Right hand, and repeat after me. "I, Jordan Aaron Cranz,
I, Jordan Aaron Cranz,
do solemnly swear
do solemnly swear
that I will support and defend
I will support and defend
the Constitution of the United States,
the Constitution of the United States,
and the Constitution of the State of California,
and the Constitution of the State of California,
against all enemies,
against all enemies,
foreign and domestic,
foreign and domestic,
that I will bear true faith
that I will bear true faith
and allegiance to the Constitution
and allegiance to the Constitution
of the United States,
of the United States,
and the Constitution
and the Constitution
of the State of California,
of the State of California,
that I take this obligation freely
and I take this obligation freely
without any mental reservation
without any mental reservation
or purpose of evasion
or purpose of evasion
and that I will well and faithfully discharge
and that I will well and faithfully discharge
the duties upon which I am about to enter.
the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations. Welcome back to the council.
Hey, thank you.
I officially present you your certificate of election.
Thank you so very much.
All right. One, two, three. One, two, three.
Thank you.
You may have seen your seat at the dice.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Swearing in Councilman Green is Kelly Smith. If you will both join me at the podium, please.
Ready? Raise your right hand.
Wait a minute. COVID.
COVID. Repeat after me.
"I, Larry B. Green,
I, Larry B. Green,
do solemnly swear
do solemnly swear
that I will support and defend
that I will support and defend
the Constitution
the Constitution
of the United States
of the United States
and the Constitution of the State of California
and the Constitution of the State of California
against all enemies
against all enemies
foreign and domestic
foreign and domestic
that I will bear truth
that I will bear truth
faith and allegiance
faith and allegiance
to the Constitution
to the Constitution
of the United States
of the United States
and the Constitution of the State of California
and the Constitution of the State of California
that I take this obligation freely
I take this obligation freely
without any mental reservation
without any mental reservation
or purpose of evasion
or purpose of evasion
and that I will well and faithfully
and I will well and faithfully
discharge the duties
discharge the duties
upon which I am about to enter
upon which I'm about ready to enter. Wow!
Close enough.
I got that one backwards. But that's okay. Got it. Got it. Oh, that's it?
One, two, three. One, two, three.
Okay. Good.
Councilman, I officially present you your certificate of election. You may resume your seat at the dials.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, everybody.
Okay. Yes, we will. My work here is done?
Well, you're certainly welcome to stay, but I sure appreciate you coming, Melissa.
It is my pleasure, it is my honor.
Just one little side note, if I may. Melissa swore me in four years ago, and I believe she told me it was the first time that she had ever done a swearing-in ceremony. And I was quite honored then, and I'm really honored tonight, so thanks for taking time out of your busy schedule. Excuse me.
Anytime you'd be delighted.
Yeah. Hello to your family.
We're gonna go ahead and move on to newly elected city council member comments. We'll start with comments by Councilmember Welty, followed by Mayor Aaron Cranz, then Councilman Green.
Okay, I'll have to get, oh, the microphone works. What a wonderful thing. Okay. I'd like to thank everybody who elected me. I know that I've worked in this community, I've met a lot of you, and the work you've done to get me here, I totally appreciate it. I'd like to say I appreciate my wife, because she's the one that really kind of drove me over the top as far as the votes, so thank you very much. And of course, to Nicholas for doing the, getting me through the commitment here. So one of the things I'd like to talk about is to talk about the people that came before me and everything they've done that's been so great. I feel kind of spoiled, because I'm coming into this office with a balanced budget and a sustainable budget. I mean, I hate to be here, coming here three years ago when we had budget crises and problems. And so I'd like to say the same thing about the POA. You know, two, three years ago, we had a budget that was basically not real sustainable with the record Chris and Jeanie and the other board members. We were able to get a budget that is now sustainable. We will have reasonable rate increases and move ahead. So the idea that the community as a whole has a sustainable path is pretty incredible. And again, I'm walking into this gift, so I'd like to thank all of you. And I'm excited about the economic development. I think that we, now that we have a base, we can start looking to the future, looking to create a Canyon Lake that is, again, a first-class community. We didn't come to Canyon Lake to live in a third or a fourth-rate community. We came to live in a first-rate community. And we have the opportunity to do that. I hope to serve you. I hope to accomplish a lot of that. So your prayers be with me, so that I can move ahead and stay clear. I'd like to thank the support from the other council members, because it was with your help that I was able to get here. And in the future, all working together, I think we'll do some great things, so appreciate you all.
Welcome.
Congratulations. Congratulations, Dale.
Thank you.
Well, the first thing I'd like to say is that I would like to take a picture with my wife, because I noticed that I forgot to do that. Yeah, I would be in deep trouble if we didn't. So if you could tell me where you'd like me to stand with her.
Right back on the X.
Right back on the X.
Good job. Good job, Jordan.
Sorry, Jordan, now you're making it.
Yeah, you did.
Well played, Mr. Mayor. Well played.
You don't have to sit on the couch tonight, Mr. Mayor. All right. Now, look at him. Look at him. One, two, three. Couple this way. One, two, three.
Now that you're doing the contact photo, tell my wife she will. Well, I'll certainly keep it short. You've heard a lot from me over the years, and I'm gonna be vacating this seat. This is the fourth time I've sat in it, and it's been more than a pleasure serving this community. I can't think of a better place to live. It's just more exciting every year. Excuse me, I've been fighting a raspy throat. But there's really, there's just not, there's not enough words I can say. I've said them ever since our new city manager has come on board. It's a fantastic council we've had. You know, I've sat on councils now for, oh, this'll be my 13th year. Never before have I experienced the pleasure that I've had with our council members here. Everything has just been invigorating. And as Dale, our new, oh, I'm so sorry. Our new council member mentioned he's very fortunate, yes, he came in to a balanced budget. We've struggled and fought for many, many years, and I just can't express how I feel. And the opportunity to serve for another four years is probably the most wonderful thing that's happened to me in all the time that I've run. Because even though I ran on other occasions, I wasn't always looking forward to working the way we are now. We are so cohesive, so much fun, so much get-together. The staff is just fantastic, and I can't tell you how much I appreciate everything and all those that have supported me. So thank you very much for the opportunity to serve once again. I apologize for my raspy throat, but that's from years of talking too much. So thank you all. I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Green.
I'll keep it short. Thank you, all Canyon Lakers that voted for me. We've got a great council. We've got a lot of exciting things that we're gonna be moving forward into this year. Our innovation and creativity and some of the things that we have in the mix or thinking about putting in the mix hopefully will propel us to the future, so that in another 30 years, we will have a video of showing folks that have what we've accomplished, where we came from, and what a great city this is. And again, I just wanted to thank all of you out there in Canyon Lake, and welcome. Hopefully, '21 will be a better year than 2020 for all of us. So have a good one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Congratulations to all of our newly elected council members. We're now going to move on to the city council reorganization. I'm going to open the floor for nominations for appointment to the mayor's seat. Are there any nominations?
Yes. Madam Clerk, I would like to make two nominations, please. Selection for mayor, Councilman Castillo.
Okay.
Selection for mayor pro tem, Councilman Smith.
And I finally get to second a motion.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilmember Green and a second by Councilmember Aaron Cranz to appoint Casey Castillo as the mayor and Jeremy Smith as the mayor pro tem. I will now do a roll call vote. Councilmember Castillo.
Aye.
Councilmember Aaron Cranz.
Aye.
Councilmember Green.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Aye.
Councilmember Welty.
Aye.
Motion carried. Congratulations to Mayor Castillo and Mayor Pro Tem Smith.
Thank you. I would just like to say, well, that's quite the honor. Thank you for the opportunity. Thank you for your trust. I'm motivated for 2021. I'm motivated to continue the great momentum we've had under the leadership of Mayor Aaron Cranz. And I guess, in the words of my 11-year-old son Graham, challenge accepted, let's go. So I'm excited. Thank you.
Thank you both so much. Congratulations. I'm excited. We've got a lot of work to do. And we're gonna continue doing it, and I'm looking forward to work with each and every one of you. And again, congratulations. And like Casey said, let's get to work. Let's make it happen. And I think there's a recess, so everyone gets to go to the bathroom.
Definitely. Let's take a five-minute recess.
Thank you. Mayor, if you can announce the time, please. Mayor Castillo.
It would be 7:38.
Thank you.
Okay. Are we back and ready to go, Madam Clerk?
We are ready.
Do you need a time, or am I good to start? It is 7:44.
Thank you.
Can I ask you to please conduct the roll call?
Councilmember Aaron Cranz.
Here.
Councilmember Green.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Smith.
That's interesting. Here.
Councilmember Welty.
Here.
Mayor Castillo.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. So this is very exciting. Thank you all for being here. I feel very, very honored. And I would ask, at this time, to have community reports first from Darcy Brook.
Yay. Thank you, Mayor Castillo. I just wanted to congratulate you and Mayor Pro Tem Smith and newly elected Councilman Welty, as well as congratulations, Councilman Aaron Cranz and Green, on your reelection. I am really excited to see the great things you guys are going to do the next few years together. You've come so far already in a short time. I'm just really excited to be a resident of Canyon Lake and actually very proud of my community. I also want to thank you again for the opportunity to share what's going on at the Water District, because there's quite a few things. So tomorrow, December 8, from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., you may have noticed signage out at the main gate and the east gate, letting people know that we're going to do hydrant flushing. And I know some people may think this is actually wasting water, but it's actually a way to help with water quality. So if you received a postcard or an email from the Water District, you probably will be impacted. And so just realize that you may have some temporary water outages. They will be addressed as quickly as possible. Your water may seem discolored when you turn on the faucet. And if that's happening, I would tell you to not use the water for the moment. Go out to your hose bid, turn the hose bid on until it runs clear. Then go turn on all your faucets until they run clear, and then that should take care of any discoloration or issues. If you continue to have issues, please call the Water District at 951-674-3146. Or you can actually visit the website, too, and there's some tips on flushing, if that's helpful for you and it's off-hours. At our last board meeting on December 1st, we voted to defer our rate increase until April 1st, 2021. And I just want to remind the council, I shared with you last month, that this is a short-term option, and we are revisiting the financial impacts of that rate deferment monthly. In addition to our water rate increase from metropolitan and western, as well as significant energy increases, we're also experiencing revenue loss because of the current shut-off moratorium. So we're paying more, and not everybody's paying their bills. So it's something we're following very closely, because it impacts our ability to get state-revolving fund loans and grants, as well as grant opportunities from the Army Corps of Engineers. So it's something we're following very closely. So I'm encouraging residents, if they have a financial impact right now, please don't wait to call our office and speak to a customer service representative. We have a rare program that can help you with a reduced rate, as well as fixed budget. And also, we're able to set different payment plans during this current pandemic. So I would encourage residents to take advantage of that. I get to report this every month, and again, we are the least efficient of all Elsinore Valley Municipal Water District water users. And I know that it's, some days it feels warm out, and so you think it's fine to leave the sprinklers on. Most people just set them and forget them. And so I'm gonna encourage you now that the days are shorter and it's cooler out, to cut back on the number of days you're watering and the amount you're watering. And if you're brave like I am, just shut the sprinklers off. There's nothing wrong with being a little hand-watering once in a while, because now when we probably fertilized for fall, all that extra runoff has all those nutrients and it's going right into the lake. And when we talk about water quality in the lake and what can we do to fix it, if we can reduce runoff, that's the first effort we can all do that will truly make a difference. And obviously, the less water you use, the less water we have to import, which means the less impact to our water rate. Imported water is, in some cases, depending on the source, three or four times as much as what we pay. So the less we can use and the more we can just be efficient, the better off we all are. I'm really excited that next month, we will actually kick off a comprehensive strategic planning process. We have not had that process since 2015, which was before I was elected. And so this particular board hasn't had the opportunity to revisit our mission, our values, and goals, and I'm excited to report back to you in the future on what those are and how we plan on getting there. And then finally, if you recall, we have a regional wastewater treatment plant upgrade and expansion going on, which is actually right in our main campus in Elsinore. And that treatment plant is being upgraded and expanded at about a cost of $150 million. This wasn't something that we planned on doing right now. It was something we had planned in the future, but regulatory control from the Regional Water Quality Control Board basically gave us a very limited time to make that happen, because our flows increased. So currently, we're estimating that this project will create about 2,500 local jobs, which right now we all need it. And it's currently on time and on budget. And Mayor Castillo, I'd be happy to take any questions, and again, I really appreciate the time.
Thank you, Director Burke. Any questions from the council? No? Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
I believe on the line, we also have Canyon Lake Property Owners Association update from President Chris Poland. Chris, are you there?
Thank you very much, and congratulations, Mayor Castillo and Mayor Pro Tem Smith, and to our new council. Especially pleased to see Dale, Councilman Welty, as I should say, on there, because he knows us well. I'd like to congratulate all of us on our 30th anniversary of the city, and look forward to moving forward with all the progress that we hope to be able to make. We had a very energetic POA board meeting last week. Maybe you heard about it. I'm pleased to say that we approved entering into a new three-year contract for Community Patrol Services with a new firm. We're in negotiations, so we haven't announced the firm yet, but we did receive 12 bids, very competitive. Three companies were interviewed, and the company that we have selected to negotiate with came with excellent referrals, strong management, comprehensive training, extensive HOA experience. And we believe that we're going to step up our, be able to step up our game on Community Patrol, which will be of great assistance to our members and also to the city. We have been very successful in holding our POA board meetings on Zoom. This last week, because of the energetic participation, we had, we well overloaded our 100-person capacity. We had 160 people on Facebook, so we had 260 people participating, which would have packed the room out, I imagine, if we'd been at the Holiday Bay Room. It was orderly, and I think it was really excellent. The reason for all of the energy, I believe, had to do with the issues that we were dealing with, with parking. The whole issues came up, because we're trying, with great focus with this year's term, to pay attention to what our members are our members are saying and to bring that to the public discussion. Two of the parking rules that we thought we were going to pass, we couldn't. But they had to do with parking trailers and RVs on the street and time limits. And we received a lot of comments on that because we didn't really deal with boat trailer parking properly and didn't deal with the permissible time allowances and the changes that we talked about. Those will be coming back. The most discussion came about because of comments that were made about solving our parking problem by considering how people park their RVs and boats and trailers. Unfortunately, the fact that this was a simple discussion to try to air out how the community felt, it was mischaracterized pretty significantly in social media, caused a lot of people to be very upset. Some are still upset. Some are still writing on social media that the board is getting ready to change things, and that was never the case. And we received a lot of good discussion over the hour and a half, and the board decided that we were not going to move forward with any changes in the rules that relate to how those vehicles are parked. Learned some great lessons about social media. It certainly is a powerful tool. It spreads misinformation as quickly as it spreads good information. I wanted to let you know that there is a reality that makes good sense in that, regardless of what you might read on social media. We certainly look forward to working with you, continuing to work with you. We're glad to have Dale there to replace Randy because he knows the inside of the POA, has been very involved over the years, and will certainly bring forward a bit more opportunities for us to work together on economic development, the permitting issues that we're dealing with, securing Black Horse and Sorrel. And with that, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to speak to you, and wish you all a happy holidays.
Thank you, Mr. Poland. Any questions or comments from the council?
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, it looks like we are at Public Safety Update, and I see the Riverside County Sheriff here, Lieutenant Rales. Welcome.
Good evening. Honorable Mayor Casey Castillo and Honorable Mayor Pro Tem Smith and new Councilmember Welty, welcome, and councilmembers. I have the Public Safety Report covering stats for the month of November. Deputies responded to 386 calls for service, which is down from 36 calls from last month, which was 422. We had 14 Part I crimes. Those are six aggravated assaults. Those assaults are mostly domestic violence incidents. We had four thefts and four motor vehicle thefts. We had no homicides, no rapes, no robberies, no burglaries, and no arson incidents. Additionally, our deputies made one public intoxication arrest, wrote five traffic citations, had two DUI arrests, investigated four traffic collisions, and additionally made seven additional arrests. So that covers the Public Safety Report, if there's any questions on that.
I do have a question. So the total arrests for the month is seven total, or seven plus, what was?
Seven, seven total.
Seven total. Okay.
On the vehicle thefts.
Yes.
Were there, were these break-ins, or were these vehicles with keys left in them?
Some with keys left in them and running, and some just vehicle thefts.
So were these just random grab-and-run, or did it look like it's organized?
Mostly, what I've seen is just, it kind of goes up from time to time. Last month, we had zero. This month, we had four. As many that we have that are stolen, we usually recover that many. Usually, they're recovered shortly thereafter. There's usually no rhyme or reason to it.
Okay. Okay. Because I think our message is for our community, as safe as we are, those who leave the keys in, the doors unlocked, it's a good opportunity for someone that's looking for a vehicle that needs wheels. And that's why they get a stack.
Usually, that's the case, and it's early in the morning. Vehicles left running to warm up. Usually, we have more of those in the wintertime because they're trying to warm the vehicle up. And yeah, it's a crime of opportunity.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. And I want to compliment your deputies. Your presence on the streets are well noted.
Thank you.
And I think our community has really embraced the change that we've made. And it shows that you guys have put effort into your patrol. And again, from council, from my perspective, thank you.
And given that, I wanted to introduce one of our deputies, Deputy Verostek. When we first took over in July 1, we really got together as an administration and wanted to improve the community policing aspect in the City of Canyon Lake. That way, you're seeing the same faces all the time. So we went through and identified four to six deputies that have been working the community consistently. I think you started right off the bat.
Yes, sir.
Working here. I know most of you have seen his face before. He's been on social media, been on patrols, and he adds a lot to the community. So I'm going to bring him in today and introduce him.
Thank you. Thank you for coming.
And this is Sheriff Tilly?
Verostek.
No, this is Verostek.
Oh, Verostek.
Yes. In the future, what I'm, Tilly is one of the other ones that is working with us at Canyon Lake. What I plan to do is maybe over the next few months, I can bring one deputy in at a time, introduce him. That way, if you have any questions or anything.
Good. Just to let everyone know that is in the room, Sheriff Verostek is huge. So if you're thinking about doing anything in the city, you ought to take a look at him and then have second thoughts, because they brought in the big guns.
But he's a teddy bear heart.
Presence is everything.
Well, we're definitely grateful for your presence and your involvement, especially with the children in our community, because we've seen a lot of positive reactions to your interactions with them. So thank you.
And we thank you for bringing Operation Juice Box in, which is
Of course.
It's been a good
Love it.
For the community.
Love it. Anyone else? Anything else with the Sheriff's Department?
Thank you.
Well, thank you for your attendance.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, moving on to Cal Fire, Riverside County Fire Department. Do we have anyone on the line?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Chief Barnett here, Riverside County Fire Department, for the Public Safety Report for November. I'd also like to say congratulations to yourself and the City Council for another fine year. And then with that, the City of Canyon Lake had 54 incidents for the month of November. Four of those were false alarms. Forty-four were medical emergencies. One was the other type fire, four public services assist, one traffic collision, for the total of 54. There was two calls on the report that was over the 12 minutes. One was actually a Code 2 call, which is without lights and sirens, and one was a Code 3 call, but it was a stage, which is what led to the over 12-minute response waiting to be cleared. That's the only part that I have for the Public Safety Report this month. We did not have the Engine 60 statistics at the time the report was posted. Is there any questions?
Yeah, sorry. This is Mayor Castillo. That was my question, was I see the 2 plus 12 for Engine 94, but nothing for Station 60. I did have a question. Other fire is described as what?
So another fire could be, a perfect example would be on the Code 2 over 10-minute, where they had a gas can that was in the middle of the street that was out prior to even being dispatched, but an engine responded just the same. So that would be an example of another type fire. It doesn't exactly fit the normal boxes of a vehicle fire or a structured fire, commercial fire, or of any of that kind. It's more of a standalone type incident where it's a rarity.
Thank you for that. Any other of the council have questions?
Nope.
Well, we appreciate your call. Thank you so much.
No problem.
Moving along, code enforcement. I note that I do not see Ms. Dixon.
Enforcement Officer Dixon is on the phone.
Oh, great.
Good evening. I just wanted to point out that we haven't seen any decreases in the number of off-road vehicles that are out there on the weekends on the federal land. We are doing the best that we can. We have noticed that the fire pits, the black marks indicating that they were there when we weren't there. We have seen an increase, which isn't unusual because it is getting colder at night and in the evenings. So we are communicating efficiently and effectively with the Rangers that are out there. And fire prevention on their behalf has also increased. So I just wanted to touch base on that and let you know what was going on with that. Other than that, we're still moving forward with our registrations and inspections for the residential rentals, which they have slowed down during the holiday season. So we'll be expecting to see those numbers pick up later. We have emphasized to everyone who's called and is interested in having the inspection postponed or delayed, that we're working with everyone we can to make sure that everybody is comfortable moving forward.
Great. Thank you. Officer Dixon, I know that there were two instances of illegal dumping. I noticed that there was a trashed couch out on the 74, kind of in the turnout that's leading up to the north gate, if you're coming from Elsinore. Do you know anything about that, or if that has been taken care of?
Up there off of Greenwald?
Yes.
Yeah, Officer Lopez did notice that, and he will be scheduling it with his cleanup crew. As far as the U-Haul and that illegal dumping that was reported this week, that has been taken care of by Officer Ecclefield.
Thank you. Councilman Erin Krantz, do you have a question?
Yes, I do. I noticed that we had 14 vehicles posted for sale. Where are those located? Or maybe that's not the quantity. Is that the date? No.
No, that's actually the section. There actually haven't been any that have been reported. And mostly, that's because we're actively working on those, and we call them, make sure that they belong to somebody who works in the center. So we haven't really been having a problem with that, although there have been a few here and there. They are being driven by employees that are working in the town center.
That's just the section code.
Right. Okay. My mistake on the quantity. But I had noticed quite a few vehicles, golf carts, et cetera, for sale in the town center. And I know at one time, we weren't allowing that, but I'm sure we're kind of relaxing our efforts right now.
Yeah.
Thank you.
At one point, we weren't, but the law's changed. And keep in mind, we do have some permitted spaces for vehicles for sale that are related to the new, the dealership that moved from further up on Railroad Canyon back into the center.
Thank you, Gina.
Thank you. And any other council member questions?
Yeah, I got a quick question for you. In regards to the off-roading vehicles, the offenders, is this happening to the same people, or is it different people each time that you're finding out?
You know, that is a wonderful question. We haven't actually caught up with the same people. However, some of that's based on distance and proximity, just not being able to catch up to them. Because once they identify the enforcement vehicles out there, of course, they're, they leave as quickly as they can. And they're in a vehicle that is very, it travels that terrain very easily. It was designed for that. So we don't always catch up to the vehicle. So although we see repeat offenders with the binoculars and stuff like that, we have not been able to contact them more than one time, because now they're aware of us, and they're aware of our presence. And that goes on all sides, even with the Rangers who use their UTV that has lights.
So most of these offenders are dropping in, you know, probably miles out there. They're not dropping in out of the road. They're coming in from, you know, Paris or Lake Elsinore, where they can kind of, you know, guys who are bringing in trailers to drop off their razors or quads or motorcycles, they're not doing it locally where you can see the vehicles, obviously.
Correct. That's correct.
That makes sense. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
I have one question for Gina, please.
Okay.
Gina, on your seven fire code violations, are those re-inspects?
Yes, they are, sir. Yes.
Okay. And where are we in that process? How far are we in? Is this their second round?
We're actually tailoring down towards the backside. So these seven violations are written ones that we're just waiting for the callback to come and re-inspect.
Okay.
So everyone has complied as far as their two-included inspections.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
Councilmember Welty?
Gina, a quick question. Would better cameras or binoculars help you? I mean, if you can take long-range pictures or license plates, does that give you any authority to do anything?
Unfortunately, they're not plated vehicles. They have either a green sticker or a red sticker that, with them in motion and moving, would be almost next to impossible to obtain.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Comments? Questions? No?
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Gina.
Gina, it looks like we need to fund a brand-new razor, right? Probably a turbo or 1,000. I'll be on the market for it. I'll get you out there.
Hey, bring it out. I'd be happy to have anyone join us on enforcement.
I knew you would. Shining lights and all.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening, everyone.
Thank you. Okay, moving along. Looks like we are at the portion for public comments. Madam Clerk, do we please read the public comment statement?
Thank you. Any person wishing to address the City Council on any matter within the jurisdiction of the city, whether or not it appears on this agenda, is asked to submit their comment electronically by sending an email to publiccomment@canyonlakec.gov. Please note that I will be accepting email comments during this meeting in real time. If you're commenting on an item on the consent calendar, on items listed on the agenda, I will read the emailed submissions into the record during the public comments portion of the agenda. If you're commenting on a business item or public hearing, I will read the emailed submissions into the record at the time that particular item is scheduled on the agenda. During this period of social distancing, electronically submitted comments should be no more than 250 words and include the person's name and agenda item number. I have no comments.
Okay. Thank you. Looks like we are at the point in our meeting for consent calendar items. Will you please read the consent calendar statement?
All items listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine matters, status reports, or documents covering previous City Council action. The items listed on the consent calendar may be enacted in one motion. With the concurrence of the City Council, a council member may request that an item be removed for further discussion. Staff recommends approval of all items.
Anyone wishing to pull an item off the consent calendar?
Madam Mayor, if we may, let's pull item number six.
Okay. Pulling item number six. A motion and a second to approve the consent calendar minus item number six?
I'll make that motion that
Second.
We approve the consent calendar removing item number six for discussion.
And I second that.
Okay. It looks like we would need a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Erin Krantz.
Aye.
Councilmember Green.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Smith.
Aye.
Councilmember Welty.
I think I'll abstain. Some of this stuff is rather new.
Thank you. Mayor Castillo.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carried.
Okay, so item number six.
Item number six. Pulled it for a couple reasons. Contract amendment. Wanted to pull this item because we have a new council member, and I think he should be part of this discussion. And also kind of see where we've been and where we're at now. We've done a lot of work in regards to contracts. When we got, in 2018, when we first, Casey and I got elected to council, we took it upon ourselves, along with the rest of the councils, really do a deep dive into what was going on in the financials of the city. And one of them was our city attorney contract. And to this day, we have, I believe, and I'm sure Jordan and Larry would agree with this, some of the best service that we're getting from Cole Herbert that we ever had. I mean, just outstanding work. And they've really, you know, come forward and done a lot. It's true. And, you know, we're really blessed to have you. And some of the creativeness that's come out of his office, along with our city manager's office, is duly noted. For me personally, I know that I sat down with our mayor now and looked at the budget, and this was a big issue for us. And we did a lot of work to fix that problem. And now you're looking at, you know, amendment contract to increase the hours that we negotiated in the beginning. in the beginning. As some of you know out there, we're starting our own fire department. We're going to need as much help as we possibly can get. But I want to have a discussion on where we've been, and where we are, and where we're going. I think that the community deserves that discussion, especially in regards to our city attorney, and talk a little bit about some of the financials that have taken place, maybe in the past and the present. So, I really wanted to open it up, also for Dale to be a part of the conversation. So, if anyone wants to talk about it, I kind of let it open, I opened it up a little bit, so.
Yeah. I would like to comment, Mayor. Obviously, Stephen has done a great job for us at almost 50% or less that we negotiated. It was a negotiated contract. It wasn't just because he's being a nice attorney. And there are terms and conditions to that contract. And we have, he's given us great stewardship, working through many difficult situations. He's represented us well in court. Of the court cases we've had, we've reached a threshold, though, that things are moving for us to be active as we are. And the things that we're doing in the community require legal services, which require hours, requires documents, requires a lot of other things. So, yes, this is an increase, and we did work very hard to streamline not only the legal cost, but also other costs that we had to try to balance our budget. But based on where we are right now, we have to balance our legal cost, and this renegotiation will help us better manage, I see, these costs. So, in one respect, yes, it is an increase, but we also have additional work that will be coming at us, and we will need the legal services to make sure that we're on the right track at all times. So, that's what I have to say. And I want to thank the Finance Committee, and Casey, and Jeremy, and the rest of council that worked very hard to identify certain things that we wanted, elements that we wanted, service levels we wanted, and put that in a contract that Stephen has very, very satisfied, has complied with, and his firm. So, again, I want to thank you for that.
Thank you. I'll chime in here. When we first started, as Mayor Pro Tim Smith mentioned, the contract in place really wasn't a retainer contract. It was hourly, and the bills would fluctuate monthly, sometimes to bills that were double in size, depending on the month. The contract that we negotiated with Stephen, I think, has served the city very well. An increase in hours keeps our costs managed, as opposed to hitting our threshold and then being billed hourly. As one of the other attorneys in the office, I understand that this is a benefit to us. And I would like to say that, I think, I would echo what both Jeremy and Larry have said. When looking at the quality and level of service, I think that we have absolutely zero complaints, and I think that this is a fiscally sound move going forward.
I was just kidding. You can't let it go to your head. No, seriously, you know, I don't want to keep reminding everybody that I'm the old man here on the council, but I remember what the bills used to be, and what they are now, and the service that we're getting now. Yep. Well, I could elaborate on a lot of things. I don't want to, I don't want to talk poorly about the past, but the service we're getting today is just fantastic. And the money that we're spending is half of what we were spending for many, many years. So, I just want to thank you for your good service.
Madam Mayor, if I may, last thing I want to say on this particular item is, is I know that I have personally been criticized by community members by doing a magic wand and just approving consent calendar items, which is why I think an item like this needs to be discussed and brought forward to this council, which is why we're able to do that. This council has taken it upon themselves to really dig deep in all that we're doing. And a lot of that is because of the work that Stephen is doing. But I just want to lastly say, thank you for your honesty and your transparency. Thank you for the fact that you really think twice before you send us an invoice, and you tell us why that is. There's not too many city attorneys, especially when you're dealing with such a small city like Canyon Lake, who really think twice about the work that's being done here. And we need you. This is the time. We're going to have an incredible year. I think 2020, 2021 is going to be an amazing year for us, and we're going to need every bit of those hours that we get from you. So, if there's no other comments, I want to, I want to make the motion that we move this one forward.
I do have just one more, one comment. I want to just confirm with the city manager. This has already been budgeted for, so there's not going to be an increase in our city attorney budget.
That's correct. When we were working on the budget last spring, we anticipated that the city would be initiating a number of new programs, such as the EMS subscription program, Fire Life Safety Program, Residential Rental Program, and others. And we knew that we would be needing more services from Cole Huber, more hours. So, we included this increase in hours in our, in our budget for this year. Cole Huber was kind enough not to come to us with that, with that change in the contract until Stephen saw that it would be financially beneficial to the city, that we were getting to the point where we're regularly exceeding the number of hours that we have every month. And so, you know, this is a move that will actually save the city money over not approving this increase in hours, and then having to, you know, reach our cap and then have to pay the hourly rate above that.
So, our base rate is going to be, our base hours are going to extend, but our base rate is our cheapest rate. So, we want to take advantage of the base, the cheapest rate by increasing the base rate. Also, so we can roll hours over into the next month. So, any unused hours that aren't used in that month, we'll go to the next month. So, if there's any strange deviation, then we can take the opportunity to still keep, you know, the budget low.
Yes. And, you know, a good example, this coming year will probably be the formation of our fire department. And so, we anticipate that we may not need the full 35 hours in the first few months of the year, but, you know, maybe towards the middle of the year, we might need more than 35 hours, and we'll have banked hours that we can roll over. So, we shouldn't have any unexpected surprises with our attorney bills.
It's good to know that our city attorney believes in the AT&amp;T model rollover. So, he's probably sponsored by them, so.
Well, and Madam Mayor, if you don't mind, I'd like to just add that I really appreciate the approach that Stephen Graham's taken. I feel that he really took to heart the discussion and the negotiation that happened when this contract was put into place, and he heard how concerned the council was with keeping these costs under control. And he is very good at communicating with me as the month goes along, saying, "Look," I'll call him, I'll say, "Stephen, you know, I need help with this. We need to move this forward." And he'll say, "Happy to do it, but we're getting kind of close to the cap. Can I wait till next month, or is there something you need this month?" And, you know, we communicate regularly. And he really does, I feel, do a good job of helping us keep that budget in check. So, I really appreciate that.
Better be careful, Mr. City Manager. We're going to be presenting him certificates here pretty soon if we keep going, so.
Okay, well, with that.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, there is a motion, and a motion by, I'm sorry, Mayor Pro Tim Smith, and a second to approve item number six by councilmember Erin Crams. I believe we need a roll call vote.
Councilmember Erin Crams?
Aye.
Councilmember Green?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Walty?
Aye.
Mayor Castillo?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, members of the council.
Thank you. Thank you for your indulgence, also.
I, one of the reasons I'm a halfway decent lawyer is because when things are going your way, you shut up. So, I didn't want to interrupt the accolades as they rolled in. But I did just want to say that working for the city of Canyon Lake is an absolute privilege. You know, you said this is a small city. This is a big city with big dreams. And I'm just so happy to be part of the team here with the city manager, with this council, who's really tackling issues that need to be addressed by cities all over the state, and you guys have the courage to tackle them. So, thank you very much for allowing me to continue to serve this city and its residents.
Thank you. Warm and fuzzies. Okay, so, moving along to business item. We would be on business item seven. This is an agreement to select consultants. Is this from, who's doing the presentation?
We have city planner Jim Morrissey on the line. Jim? Jim Morrissey, are you on the line?
Sorry, I just gave you a grade of induction. I'm mute. Yes, I am on the line, and I wanted to congratulate the council on the recent election and reelection. The item before you is selection of consultants, one primary consultant that we would have an agreement with, to prepare a specific plan and an environmental document for the town center. The, the two primary aspects of the agreement, or I should say, components to the agreement, is the use of SB2 funds, state funds, planning grant funds, and the use and the preparation of a specific plan document. First of all, the SB2 funds, as I mentioned in the staff report, are funds that the state very much wanted to distribute to jurisdictions. I recall at the last annual planning conference that we held face-to-face, State Department of Housing and Community Development was almost begging jurisdictions to apply for the funds. The funds were to be distributed, or have been distributed, based upon the size of the jurisdiction using a sliding scale. So, for the group that the city was in, the maximum allocation was $160,000. Our goal in using those funds, for which we will also contribute 140 for a total of $300,000, is to prepare a specific plan that we hope would cover several items. One, increase housing opportunities with a mixed-use design in the center, that means both commercial and residential, and also to increase the attractiveness of the center, to not only entice future users, but also additional patrons to the city rather than driving elsewhere for goods and services. The housing element that the council recently adopted, the first program identified a number of planning activities that the city would undertake to increase housing opportunities, of which specifically identified was the adoption of the town center specific plan. With regard to the process, I wanted to make sure we were clear on how we went about selecting the particular consultant or consultant team, if you will, because we kind of had a little bit of a unique opportunity presented itself that came about through the process. And typically jurisdictions go out with RFQ, as we did, request for qualifications, or an RFP, request for proposal. We went the initial route, the request for qualifications, in an effort to try and attract smaller firms. It's a relatively small agreement based upon what consultants are now getting for different specific plans, general plan amendments, environmental impact reports, those types of things. And some of the smaller firms had expressed, based upon my conversations with them, an interest in not going through an elaborate process, that they really didn't have time or money to do. But yet, they would be able to provide the city with a good document. And those would be more of the type of firms we probably would hire. So, we went through the request for qualifications, and the four firms I've listed in the staff report, all fairly well-known, several within the inland empire. One particular firm, Albert A. Webb Associates, happened to include a cost estimate. We didn't ask for it. We asked for just qualifications. And the outgrowth of that cost estimate was that there would be funds available to particularly use with another consult. And that was interesting from the standpoint that because of the integration of residential and commercial development on the site, and the need to have a product that would avoid what we would call discretionary action later, such as a conditional use permit, or other hearing, or drawn-out planning approval process, we wanted something that would really work well. It presented us an opportunity to include another consult. And WHA has not only planning experience, but architectural experience. And when I raised the topic with Webb Associates, they indicated that they had actually worked with them, which I thought was a, just a perfect little package. So, I requested that Webb and WHA put their heads together, and based upon some additional conversation, come up with a scope of services that we thought would be useful for, like I say, in growing the commercial aspect of the site, making it more attractive, so that it increased not only patronage, but revenue to the city, and integrated the residential component, which, which is very important and not the easiest thing, whether it's what I call vertically integrated, where it's stacked on top of the commercial, or standalone, adjacent to the, to the commercial on the site. So, they provided us a scope of services. I've attempted to just kind of generalize the different topics that would be covered. In general terms, they're going to do what I'll call the relatively typical residential and commercial design standards. But also, they're going to incorporate more architectural detail in there, and landscape design work. And I think that's, that's an important feature, because we are a unique jurisdiction with an opportunity to provide different services to a potential clientele that I think is more economically, or just higher income than some of the other surrounding jurisdictions. And we'd like to pull those people in, have them enjoy the center, want to remain in the center, so it's an attractive place to be. It's of interest you to dine and walk. And in fact, one of the things we even talked about was having rooftop dining on top of potentially a residential project, if not a higher-level commercial project that would provide views out to the lake. So, we wanted to try and do something that was a little different, but we felt we needed architectural help for that, making sure that the density we had really worked out to what we thought it was, that the gathering places in the center worked well, and had the features that they needed to attract people, make them linger, and thus make them shop more, and create more of a buzz or interest in the center. So, we've kind of combined those two principal firms to prepare the majority of the document. The other component to it, and a very important component, is the, what I've labeled the technical studies, those environmental documentation items that we'll need to avoid subsequent review, so that when a developer comes in, he can more or less just provide his site plan and building plans, as long as they're consistent with the document. We can review it for consistency and issue the permits because we've cleared it environmentally. So, that's the other aspect of it. And Webb is very good in their environmental documents. They'll be doing most of it. They'll have some assistance in one particular component, the cultural resources report, but that's about it. The also included is a copy of our request for qualifications, what we actually posted on the website. And I probably should mention that I had discussions with some of the firms, as I mentioned, letting them know that the document would be available, the ones just, however they researched it, noticed it on our website, or in discussion with others. So, we had the four firms submit, and we're recommending, in this case, a selection of two, but one primary one, which would be Albert A. Webb and Associates. So, our recommendation to you is that you direct the city manager to obtain an executive agreement with Albert A. Webb and Associates using our standard professional services using our standard professional services contract and include the appropriate provisions as identified in the state SB two planning grant funds. And those are particularly accounting-related procedures. And with that, I'd be happy to try and respond to any questions you might have.
This is Casey. Thank you for your call. I am personally excited about this because I know specific planning has been on our list. So this is a council goal. It's the 12th hour of the year, right? But we're getting it done, so I'm excited about this. This will also include potential zoning changes?
Yes.
Okay. And I note that this is for the town center. Is there potential that this will also include the East Port?
This specific plan will be just for the town center.
Okay. And I did see traffic analysis as a component. Can you kind of elaborate on that a little bit more, Mr. Morrissey?
Yeah, the focus, I shouldn't say, I show you the focus. So in preparation with the environmental document, we have to cover specific items. The state has an appendix, I think it's Appendix G, that enumerates the different types of issues that are to be covered. You, a jurisdiction can adopt its own, but if not, you default to the state, what's referred to as the initial study format. And in there are a whole series of questions related to a variety of topics, one of which is transportation. So the traffic analysis is an attempt to determine how traffic would be, in general, distributed. Now, the model that's going to be used is the vehicle models traveled model, which is something that's also required through the Environmental, California Environmental Quality Act. And it's necessary to go hand in hand with the equality analysis and the noise analysis to determine where traffic flow is generally going, the extent that it is, and thus the amount of emissions that would be generated by that. It's not going to be a traffic analysis at particular intersections saying that the level of service is level C or D, as is more typical in traffic analyses. It's going to focus on the extent of the trips rather than the impact of the trips on the local system. Is that what you needed to know?
That is exactly what I was wondering. Thank you. Anyone else?
I have a question.
Can I go? And then you go. Jim, I got a couple of questions. And one is the timeline on this. Let's say we award this contract. When do we have a, what is the projected finished document date? What do we have in the contract for discompletion?
Yeah, it would need to be prior to, I'll let me back up. So based upon the SB two funding criteria, we need to submit final invoices, I believe, in February of next year.
Right.
Excuse me, 2022.
Timeline.
And so the completion would need to be the end of 2021.
Okay. Because I knew the SB requirements, because I was in that meeting. The last thing I have to ask on this plan, are we also including the condo and the motel properties that are adjacent to the center in this study?
Yes.
Great question.
Okay, so the whole.
The condo component, no, but the.
Motel?
The hotel side, yes.
Okay, so we will go up to the condos. So the, most of the entire footprint of the center will be in the plan?
Yes.
Okay, that's all I need. Thank you.
Okay.
The timeline was part of my question, so thank you. The other question is, obviously, the retail market's changing rapidly due to the COVID and we haven't quite anticipated what the future's going to look like in three or four months. I just hope we would have discussions with the firm rather early in the process about what they anticipate or what we can expect from possible changes due to the COVID environment. Thank you.
Councilman, okay. All right, so moving forward, it looks like we would need a motion and a second to enter into an agreement. Is that correct?
I make the motion to enter into the agreement.
I did. I heard it. Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion.
Just to clarify, this is for Albert A. Webb's and Associates, correct?
With the subconsultant.
Okay, perfect.
So it sounds like we have a motion and a second to enter into an agreement with Albert A. Webb and Associates. It looks like we need a roll call vote.
Councilmember Aaron Krenz.
Councilmember Green.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Smith.
Aye.
Councilwoman Rowalte.
Aye.
Mayor Castillo.
Aye. Motion carried.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Morrissey. Okay, moving on to business item number eight, lease amendment.
Good evening, mayor, city council. Tonight's recommendation to the city council is to approve the Seventh Amendment to the library lease to extend until June 31st of 2021, with the option to terminate the lease as early as March 31st of 2021. Excuse me. Towards the end of 2019, we, the city was made aware that the county library was looking to locate to a larger location in the town center. We were made aware that they did locate a site here in the town center. At that time, they reached out to us and asked for a Sixth Amendment to begin the process of rehabbing the space for their new, for their new library. Because, oh, and that lease was to end in, or it's going to end in January of next year, January 31st of 2021. I was made aware recently to, because of COVID, their rehab and constructions have somewhat delayed. So they've asked for this extension to extend out for about six months. I'm sorry, for five months, because the, this current lease ends in, like it said, in January. So it's a five-month extension with an option to terminate in March, in the end of March. So staff's recommendation is, again, to approve the Seventh Amendment to the library lease. The, there is no increase to the lease. We're just kind of extending it. You know, if you recall, last year's lease was an increase of 3%. It was pretty significant from what we've seen in the past years. We just kind of like to maintain that for the county and just keep that through this current extension. Questions?
Any questions from the council?
Couple of questions. Seventh Amendment, interesting. So the pulse, the relationship, the conversations that you're having, are we going to see an Eighth Amendment?
I don't believe so, but there's always that possibility. I mean, we're going to know.
What's the lag time this time? Is it just the pieces and the puzzles? Is it funding? Is it?
No, it's really the construction time that's going on over there.
That's what it is, okay.
Yeah. We're, they're pretty certain that they should have this done, as they told me, sometime in January. But then there's also the move. That's another option that has to be considered in there. That's why they're thinking that potentially March may maybe work for them. But there's always that possibility there could be some other delays. So that's why they wanted that option to be able to terminate the lease as early as March. So it's been all due to construction and COVID has kind of played a part in that. It's kind of delayed things for them.
So, you know, with this agreement moving forward, if they are out in March, then obviously we're down four grand.
That's correct.
A month.
Yes.
Without no penalties, without any issues. So we're doing them more of a solid than anything else.
Yeah, I would agree so, but at the same time too, you know, last year didn't, in the past years from all these amendments, the increase has never been there. It's always been consistently a 3% increase. Last year, they did us up and they increased it to 6% for us. So we're already in a way sort of capitalizing.
Right side up?
Yeah, from them. So, yeah, but pretty much, yeah, you're right. At the end of, at the end of March, potentially, then at that point, we're.
So what's, from a staff's perspective, what's the plan?
Mike, maybe, maybe let me take that one. So I guess the first thing I'd like to remind the council is that when we passed the budget in June, the assumption was that the library was going to be done at the end of December. And so we budgeted revenue through the end of December from the library lease. So anything beyond that is kind of gravy on top of, you know, the revenue that we were expecting from the lease. The council has discussed the possibility of moving the council chambers upstairs when the library leaves. I think that's something that, now that we're really kind of closing in on the time when the library is likely to actually leave us, that we can start talking about more seriously and perhaps contemplate in next year's budget and then decide what we want to do with this space. If we want to lease it out, if we want to use it as a community room. Many community groups still use this space. But that's something that we can talk about more as we start the budgeting process for next year.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Okay, I would need a motion and a second to approve the Seventh Amendment to the lease agreement.
I'll move that we approve business item number eight, lease amendment, which is the Seventh Amendment to the library lease.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. This does not require a roll call?
If we count a roll call, please.
Okay. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Aaron Krenz.
Aye.
Councilmember Green.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Smith.
Aye.
Councilwoman Rowalte.
Aye.
Mayor Castillo.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. And it is my understanding that business item number nine was pulled by the city manager?
Correct.
Okay, so moving right along to city manager comments.
Actually, Madam Mayor, we have a public hearing?
I apologize. That's item number 10, the public hearing.
Okay. I have it down as number nine. Okay, so we have a public hearing. Time for public hearing is at 8:45. Staff presentation?
Good evening, mayor, city council. Tonight, city staff is asking for city council to hold a public hearing and approve resolution 2020-52, authorizing the allocation of fiscal year 2122 Community Development Block Grant, also known as CDBG, funding to helping our people in Elsinore, I keep forgetting what the acronym is, HOPE, if everybody's familiar with, and the city of Canyon Lake. As a recall, the city of Canyon Lake annually participates in the Community Development Block Grant funding through Riverside County Economic Development Agency. Each year, the city has allocated grant funding that is used towards programs that benefit low to moderate-income individuals in the city. Traditionally, city council has allocated 15% of that funding to nonprofit public service agencies that serve Canyon Lake residents and any remaining funds towards a public facilities project. On October 7th of 2020, city staff issued a public notice calling for nonprofit agencies to submit applications for fiscal year 2122 CDBG funding. Applications were due to city hall by Monday, November 16th of 2020. City staff received one application from HOPE. City staff and county ADA has reviewed and determined that HOPE's application for their continued pantry program meets the funding requirements for CDBG and demonstrates that it supports, that caters to only low-income seniors, grandparents raising grandchildren, working poor families and children, single parents, the disabled and homeless, and unemployment individuals. Based on the conclusions of our findings with the applications and the approval from county ADA's office, city staff is recommending that city council authorize the 15% allocation of the fiscal year 2122 CDBG funding towards HOPE. As it continues to the previously approved ADA projects that the city has approved in the past, we're also recommending any remaining balance from the funding to be allocated towards the ADA accessibility projects. And that project in particular is the city hall project. If you recall, we reallocated some previous money from the, from city hall project to the new building that we own here in the town center. So the city's estimate to receive amount for CDBG for fiscal 2122 is $27,000. Of that $27,000, $4,050 would be allocated to HOPE if council approves. And any remaining balance would be, would go towards the city's ADA project, which is about $22,950. Questions?
Any questions by staff or from council two staff?
Yes, if you don't mind, Madam Mayor. Mike, I've got a few questions for you, my friend. This is my favorite topic, as you know, CBDBG DVD. Here we go again.
Yep.
So in regards to the allocation of the $4,050.
Yes.
We're not required, right?
We are not. That is something that it's totally up to the city council to decide. We can maintain that balance and put that entire $27,000 towards the ADA project. But it's really council's decision to decide whether or not they like to do that.
I know you and I took a stab at helping, out Helping Hands in regards to this. This year, for the Turkey Drive, didn't everything go to HOPE?
It did. And as you recall, we've kind of decided that.
Rotating, right?
We rotate it every year.
Right.
So last year, Helping Hands received all the donations for the Turkey Drive. HOPE took advantage of that for this year. Helping Hands will take advantage next year for all the donations.
I like HOPE. I do. They do good work. I don't know. I want to throw this out to my colleagues. We've done a lot for HOPE over the last few years. And we have. I mean, we've given them everything that we possibly can. We've tried to help out Helping Hands here locally. I know that we're addressing a lot of issues in regards to ADA accessibility projects, especially with the new building that we just took on. With the idea of what's coming, with the possibility of moving our chambers, I could even see the funds needed even more so just to get things up and running here at home. So I just want to ask my colleagues, you know, what do they think about this year holding on to the funds for the big projects that we do have coming forward? Especially because we're going to, we just continued, you know, allowing them to do the Turkey Drive this year. I know it's going to be a rotating thing now, but it happens to land on a year that, you know, and they did very well too, if I wasn't mistaken, so.
Yeah, they did pretty good.
My thought is, I think, yes, we have every right to hold it for us, but I think in the spirit of the, of the grant, I think it does work well for us to pick a charitable organization to donate at least some funds. ADA is important, and you're absolutely right. We are going to need probably more funds than the 22 to get us up to speed. But I think for the community and what HOPE does, not just on a holiday season basis, but year-round, I think it is a, it's a plus to the community and to the region. And I think it just shows a good spirit from Canyon Lake that we're supporting them. That's just me.
I agree with Larry. I think that certainly with the way things are these days, that those organizations are probably, can use it better than we can. We, fortunately, we are financially capable of doing some of these things that need to be done. And if they're not, they could wait, but I don't think that, that the charitable organizations really shouldn't, I shouldn't say be punished, but they shouldn't have to wait. We should be able to do all we can to contribute to, all of them, not just, not just, not just HOPE, but we should maintain this charitable spirit that we have, I believe.
Just a comment from here. I think we're in a period where the, the public need for a lot of people who've lost their jobs is just beyond the pale. We, this is not a typical year where, you know, where we have a lot of people that really don't need the help. And I think we're in a year where people, we can't do enough in this particular year, especially as far as basic things like food and, and service. We're not talking about, you know, giving people anything super special like cars or window passes or anything. We're talking about food. And I think in this particular need, in this period, that this is the time we really need to do this.
Your response?
No, with, with that, I'm good. I'll make the motion, you know, to move forward, absolutely.
Okay. Any testimony by proponents? Any testimony by opponents? Hearing none. I will close this public hearing at 8:53. Any additional discussion by city council? Hearing none. I look for an action by city council.
Yep, I'll make that motion.
I'll second the motion.
Motion in a second to approve resolution 2020-52. I believe this requires a roll call vote.
Councilmember Aaron Krenz?
Aye.
Councilmember Green?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Walty?
Aye.
Mayor Castillo?
Aye.
Motion carried to approve resolution number 2020-52.
Thank you. Okay, city manager comments?
Just a couple of things this evening, thank you. Well, first of all, I would like to extend a very warm welcome to Councilman Dale Walty. Very happy to have you here. Very happy this election season is over. As, as I think I speak for all staff when I say election seasons can be pretty stressful for staff. And so it's nice that that's behind us now. And I also think I speak for the entire staff when, when I say that we're, we're very pleased that this, we believe this is a council that will continue to work cohesively together and, and continue with the progress that has been made over the last few years. And we're, we're very happy to, to have you here, Dale. Thank you. And congratulations to Mayor Castillo and Mayor Pro Tem Smith. It's going to be a fantastic year, I think. Just a couple of things to put on your radar for the January meeting. First, we are going to go through our goal-setting process for 2021. Keeping in mind that we will be starting a fire department in 2021, I'm hoping that we can keep the list a little shorter. I think this year we had maybe 18 goals. So it's going to be a very heavy lift getting that department started. It's going to take the majority of our, majority of our efforts. But that being said, there are other important things that, that we need to accomplish next year as well. So we'll go through that process in the January meeting. We'll also do committee assignments in January. So if any members of the council have any particular requests, please submit that to the mayor. And we'll go through that process in January. Lastly, you will probably see a policy addressing staffing issues related to COVID-19 at the January meeting. We have had, we've been very fortunate. We have not had any positive COVID tests amongst the staff. We've taken a lot of the recommended precautions. We've been very careful. We have had a couple of close calls. In fact, we had one today. We had a little bit of a scare today. Turns out everyone tested negative, we're fine. But it, it made us realize that we need to have a process and procedure in place on how to deal with, with some staffing issues related to COVID-19. So we will likely bring that to you at the, the January meeting. Speaking of the January meeting, I may be speaking out of turn here because it's under announcements, but typically the January meeting would be the first week in January, which would be the 6th. We'd like to move that back one week to the 13th because of the holiday break. Staff won't be back to the office until the 4th, which wouldn't give us time to print and publish the, the agenda in time for a meeting on the 6th. So if there are no objections, we're recommending Wednesday, January 13th.
Madam Mayor, if I may. Anna, if you can, continue the, the calendar invites. Those are awesome.
Yes.
If you could do that, that would just, like I'm a regular, that's just woo-hoo. Love it.
And that concludes my comments for the evening, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So we'll go to council comments. Reminding council to keep comments to approximately three minutes each. We'll start with councilmember Aaron Krenz.
Thank you. Well, early in November, I almost had a SCAG meeting, but my computer crashed just about the time I was zooming in. So I missed that, so I apologize for that. I did, we had a great Veterans Day parade. I haven't, I know, I still hear about it. Thanks to our great chairman, Casey Castillo. He did a great job putting it together. We were a little apprehensive at the, the beginning of the year, thinking that things weren't going to be quite so well. It turned out to be better than any of the other events that we've had under the circumstances. So thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
Also, my vector meeting was not what anybody would expect it to be, but it was talking about social media. And this is something I think that we need to discuss either at our next planning meeting or goals or something, but, or I believe that our city attorney here would also be involved. It seems that the Brown Act is being violated by elected officials speaking with one another on, during social media. And there's, there's a list of things here that I'm sure you are familiar with or, or will be, but you're welcome to have this if you like. But something I think that we need to discuss to prevent any problems on, on social media. So it's just something I think that we should bring up. And today, I had a meeting prior to coming here, which had to cut short. It was probably going to be the longest meeting as the POA had the other night. We had a meeting today with Public Comments of WRCOG in regards to the HERO program. And I think Councilman Walty is probably familiar with some of this that's been going on. The HERO program, the residential program is being seriously violated. Awful, awful lot of people that have been taken advantage of having work done that was never done, getting billed for things that never took place, supposedly signing agreements that they never signed. And this is mostly the elderly and the poor people that didn't understand the program. They were offered all these wonderful things that haven't taken place. And I'm really sorry to apologize for this because when, when the HERO program first started, it was kind of my job to push it. I was certainly telling everybody in Canyon Lake how wonderful this opportunity to put solar on. Certainly, it, there were other things that, other types of home improvements that could be done under the HERO program. But I think that I didn't get a chance to listen to the whole meeting because I had to be here at 4 o'clock. But it sounds to me like the HERO program, the residential, is probably going to be discontinued. They're going, still, it's still successful in the, in the commercial, in the retail business, but the homeowners are, well, they're very unhappy. I heard about 15 of them and then, then I had to leave the, so I don't know what took place. I was going to call tomorrow and talk to Rick Bishop and see what took place. But I'm really disappointed that this has happened. So, and that's really all I have to report on. It was a quiet month otherwise. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Green?
Thank you. The, we had the RCA Executive Board met. And RCTC has authorized and verified through their board, as well as our board, the general board of the merger. And so the transition has started. The financials have started. Legal counsel has started. There'll be one director, that'll be RCTC. We think that the combination of the two agencies will serve the mission of RCA. And also, it will fit nicely with RCTC's, not only their master plan, but how they do, there are different programs that we mirror very closely. So that's going on. I'm still on the executive board, and I still will be on the executive board next year. We are in a transition. It won't affect the boards. The boards will still be intact. They will be autonomous to each other, but we will still interact through the higher echelon. RCA will be totally responsible for its financials. We are assuming all of our per's obligation, we would have been anyway. That's a county requirement. We have about $5.2 million going out right now to cover the obligations, both pension and retirement benefits. We are offering staff current positions if they want to come over to RCTC. Some may, some may not. Our intent from the executive board was to try to make the transition as easily as possible for the employees of RCA and those who are long-term employees, that we don't lose the institutional knowledge, that we keep them on. So it helps both RCTC and RCA to keep going seamlessly forward. So we hope that the merger will be completed by February in some form that will have actually documentation. The attorneys are drawing them up now. Looks all positive. So I think that those are good things for not only both agencies, but for our county. And so that's a good thing. And we're well represented, the city of Canyon Lake, in that little corner of the world. There has been no emergency preparedness meeting because of COVID. And I did have an RCA board meeting today, but unfortunately, because of our COVID thing we had this morning, we kind of pulled it off because we didn't want to take a chance of, we didn't know what was going on, so. But good news was, the test came back negative and we're moving on. So with that, welcome on board and welcome to mayor. You're going to do great.
Thank you. Big shoes to fill. Mayor Pro Tem Smith?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A couple of updates in regards to RCA Riverside Transportation Agency. Couple of things, we usually this time of year allow for free ridership for the holidays, allowing people to commute to and from, whether it's work, Christmas shopping, whatever that might be. And obviously, that is not happening due to COVID. There's been several out cases that has occurred recently with some of our bus drivers receiving COVID while at work. So I just want to say, you know, thoughts and prayers for those on the front lines in this thing. There's a lot of struggles and they're having to deal with it day in and day out. So keep your prayers for all those that not only are in, you know, public safety, but everyone and anyone, our nurses and our cashiers at our stores, everyone that's on the front lines. I got the privilege of sitting in on RCTC and was able to be part of the process of taking on the vote to look at what Larry was just talking about. And, you know, it was very, it's very interesting when you look at the dynamics of what's going to take place and what the future holds for these two organizations. RCTC as a whole, in my mind, is one of the most successful government agency in Riverside County. They're phenomenal. And if you don't believe me, just look at their staff. Most of their staff members have been there 15-plus years, and they continue to come back for more because of how well the organization is ran. So I think that RCA will do very well with RCTC, and I think it's going to be a really good relationship between the two. And I'm hoping to serve on that next year and be able to work with Larry a little bit closer on some of the projects that they're working on. Lastly, I just want to say Merry, Merry Christmas to everyone out there. Try to enjoy the holidays. Bring a smiles and some cheer to your family. Don't let the year bring you down. There's so much joy out there despite everything that's going on around us. You know, hold your loved ones and remember, 'tis the season.
Thank you. New councilmember Walty?
Anyway, thank you for inviting me to, welcoming me aboard. I appreciate it. I, I feel that this is going to be a great, great group to work with and, and the staff. I just, you've been great bringing me on, so I really appreciate that. I haven't attended any outside really meetings yet, so I don't have anything to bring. My turn is coming, anything to bring back? I just want to thank Randy Bonner because he, you know, the Echnop Roundtable and the regular roundtable, I've been a part of that through different levels of participation. It's been a wonderful thing, so I'm looking, looking forward to see that, that continue on. And, and, you know, we, we have a community where we are more closer knit than I think we've been a long time. The POA, the city, EVMWD, historically, there's been some very difficult times. We'll do our best to cooperate because our, our spirit of cooperation has never been at this level ever that I've known it. And we're going to make sure we keep that level of cooperation and, and we can synergetically work together with our other partners to develop a great community. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Well, I just want to echo what you just said, Dale. It was nice to see Randy get recognized tonight. I know that this council had spoken about him in the meeting prior, but it was really cool to see the other agencies also take note of his accomplishments in service to the city. Ledge was dark this month. The work continues on efforts to meet new requirements by regional board to determine if there's going to be additional work to be funded. As Jordan mentioned, Veterans Day was a success. Lots of great feedback, lots of families involved this time. So thank you again to the volunteers, the donors, amazing city staff who participated, the committee members. And I'm, I'm thinking, like Jordan said, next year is going to be just even bigger and better. I did want to touch on, out of our finance committee meeting, there has been some discussion on, I'm sorry? Oh, okay. Discussion on social media about issues outside of the SkyLink entrance on Railroad Canyon. And if any member of the public has missed those discussions, we do have a traffic engineer report in progress to let the city know if there's additional steps we can take to ensure the safety of our residents in that area. And then, again, thank you to everyone who participated in the Turkey Drive. And then lastly, I want to say, well, not exactly lastly, but I want to give a shout out to Tyler, our management analyst. The State of the City video was great. Your innovations have really made it easier for the residents of Canyon Lake to get information, know about what we're doing, what we're planning on doing. And I, for one, think you have really kind of pushed us to be competitive in terms of representative as, you know, a city that's with it. So thank you very much for that. And again, like council, Mayor Pro Tem Smith said, happy holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. I guess we'll see you in 2022 or 2021. Don't skip a year. 2021. And with that, next council meeting, I guess, okay? January 13th, 2021. 5:00 PM for closed session, 6:30 PM for open session, and we will adjourn at 9:11.